...of O Canada.
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all the suns come in. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Ah, keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, absent with regrets.
Take a motion to accept councillor, excuse councillor Dennis from tonight's meeting, your worship, second four comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You'll step out when the time is, okay, good. An approval of agenda additions or deletions. So I have three additions. I have addition A under number 11, under number 12. 12A healthcare, 12B 100 meals update, and 12C a change of committee the whole time. Anything else, anyone? Okay. Do I have a second there? Moved and seconded?
Question, your worship.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Approval of minutes, Town Council, September 13th, 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Committee of the whole meeting, September 24th.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Committee of the whole, September 26th.
Don't move, your worship, second.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. So, under business arising, we have second reading Streets and Sidewalks bylaw. So this is, so the public can speak on this one, right? Okay, so I'll just ask three times, but we just did that in the hearing before in the public hearing. So this time, I'll ask three times if anyone wants to speak to this issue. And if you do, you can come up to the microphone and tell us your name and where you reside, and you can, you can have your say. So would anybody like to speak to this issue? Second time, would anyone like to speak to this issue? And a third and final time, would anyone like to speak to this issue? Streets and sidewalks bylaw. Okay, hearing no one, I would be seeking a motion on this issue. Moving to accept as, as is presented, right? Okay, all right, any more discussion?
Question.
Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you, folks. Okay, new business, trucking of highway bulk salt tender. CAO.
Thank you, your worship. There's a memo from the manager of Public Works attached to your agenda package. Annually, we do a tender for trucking of highway salt. This year, we did it as usual for the winter season as advertised on the public procurement website and the Town of Yarmouth's website with a closing date of September 26, 2018. This year, five responses were received and the results are summarized by the manager in his memo. So after reviewing the tenders, it is recommended that the contract be awarded to the lowest tender, Elmsdale Landscaping Limited, in the amount of $39.25 per tonne plus HST for a total estimated contract price for the season of $58,875 plus HST. And that is for your information and consideration.
Yeah, I was just gonna answer. Go ahead, deputy.
Is that the first time, I don't think I've, is that the first time we used, or if we approved this, is that the first time we've had Elmsdale? No, we've had Morse before.
We have had GK Morse on more than one occasion. I can't speak to whether or not we've had Elmsdale Landscaping before, but they have certainly bid in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moved by councillor McLeod. Do I have a second? And by deputy, go ahead councillor Wood.
So I'll be supporting the motion, simply even though we haven't had this fellow before, he's within less than $1,000 of Morse we have had experience with. So it's likely a reliable bid.
Thank you. Okay, moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Question, your worship.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thanks, folks. RFD Municipal and Other Authorities Pension Plan Transfer Act, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. The aforementioned act was proclaimed in 2016. It allows municipalities and other public sector entities to consider transferring their pension plans into the public sector's superannuation, public service superannuation plan. So recently, our pension advisory committee met with our consultants and they went through a fairly detailed discussion about what the differences and similarities are of the two plans, how the transfer occurs, and sort of what would, what would be involved in the consideration. The, I guess some key points. We operate a defined benefit pension plan for our employees for the Town of Yarmouth alone. We have 58 employees. The pension assets are in the area of $11 million. The public sec, public service superannuation plan operates its plan with currently over 17,000 members of the plan, and they manage $6.2 billion in assets. And so relatively speaking, we're a very small, very small organization running a pension plan that has risk associated with it, financial risk associated with it for the Town of Yarmouth. Right now, we're operating on a fully funded basis, on a going concern basis, as is the the PSSP program. And so we are in a fairly good position in terms of this transfer. One of the things that, that, that we have with our plan that you need to be aware of is the, the wind-up cost of our plan. So if we were to decide at some point in the future to simply wind up our defined benefit plan and do something different for pensions, the wind-up cost is, and I updated this to the 2018 numbers, is around 2.8 million. So it's a significant cost. And we're not at a point of having to consider that, but we don't know the future. One of the things that causes me concern is that we have, we implemented about seven years ago, a rate stability plan because we had rates that were moving every three years with valuations. We've been overfunding the plan for the last seven years. And, and that has given us stability, but it hasn't given us much of a, a financial cushion against, against sudden, sudden shocks. Talking to our pension consultants, there are possibilities of regulatory changes the regulator is considering that could impact our plan. Right now, we're required to fund 100% on a going concern basis. There's a possibility that could change and go up, creating a, a liability for us that would have to be funded. The rationale for increasing that would be that it would build a level of conservatism within the, within the plan to protect, protect the benefits of the employees. The cost to transfer our assets to the PSSP would be approximately $700,000. That would have to be, obviously some work would need to be done in talking with the folks at the PSSP, with our pension consultants, and talking about, you know, what the, what it would cost essentially to transfer the benefits that we currently have into that plan. The payback, I guess in terms of the Town of Yarmouth is, and the reason I'm bringing this forward to you, is that it's estimated that the savings in contributions from the Town of Yarmouth would be approximately $130,000 a year. On that basis, you're looking at a payback of five and a quarter years, and the savings go forward in perpetuity. Certainly, there will be changes, I'm not suggesting for a second that there wouldn't be at some point in the future, changes in plan rates, but I would suggest to you that the changes in plan rates are less likely to be significant in a large plan such as the PSSP compared to the Town of Yarmouth plan. So as a consideration for you for two things, one is the, the sustainability of the town. This is a financial opportunity that I don't think you should overlook. The second is, of course, providing the same pension plan that's available to over 17,000 public sector employees throughout the province, you would be providing to your, to your employees. In some regards, the benefit is not as good as what, what the Town of Yarmouth plan provides today. In other ways, it's better. And frankly, it comes down to your personal circumstances in terms of which, which would you be better off with. The plan transfer process would look at every individual case, and, and we would be aware of what the impacts would be on a case-by-case basis. The intention would not to be to create winners and losers, but to, to at least put people on as good a footing as they, as they currently are under the, under the current plan. So there's a bit of work needs to be done by the actuaries, a bit of negotiation, and ultimately, a final decision would need to be made. Now, the final decision is, it's a two-part process. One is, of course, the Town of Yarmouth would have to agree as the town sponsor to make, to make that change or transfer. But the, the Municipal and Other Authorities Pension Plan Transfer Act requires that every plan member, every person with a deferred pension under the plan, every person who is a survivor of a former pensioner, and every pensioner would have an opportunity to vote on whether or not to make the transfer. And it would be required that over 50%, over 50% of the plan, of those people I listed who voted would have to vote in favor of the transfer. So it isn't solely a decision of the plan sponsor because the plan has, has other stakeholders, obviously. But what's being asked for tonight is, is two things. One is to, to endorse the work going forward to get our pension consultants to determine the feasibility of transferring and to assist us in the transfer process, should it be approved by all the appropriate authorities, and to do that eyes wide open, that we're talking about a transfer cost, an upfront cost, in the area of $700,000 with a payback estimated at five and a quarter years. Those numbers will be refined through the process, so you'll know exactly what we're talking about in terms of the current situation. Nobody can guarantee you that the rates won't change within that five-year period. It is somewhat unlikely that they would change under that program. The public sec, one last comment on the public sector superannuation plan, just as an indicator of its stability. So in 2010, the government of the day did change the, the plan. They made it a, a shared responsibility between the, the subscribers and the plan sponsor, as opposed to just being the plan sponsor. And they've been able to offer indexing to the pensioners since, since that change, and they do that on a five-year block. So the plan is in good enough shape that they're able to not only project to meet the plan obligations, but they're offering indexing to pensioners, not as high as CPI, but some level of indexing. So that's an indication of the strength of the plan. I'll stop talking for a minute, and if there are any questions, your worship, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Get it on the table, your worship, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of staff. And I think the most important wording in the recommendation from staff is to determine the feasibility of transferring the Town of Yarmouth Defined Pension Benefit Plan into the super sector superannuation plan, so the feasibility of. So it sounds like there's still a lot of work to do for this. This is not going to be done in a month or two, right? This is, this is gonna be quite a process.
Yeah, it will be, sorry, it will be a matter of...
Want to get a second there before we talk, or?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the work with the PSSP will take a few months of work there, but the, the work also in terms of informing the employees, you know, pensions is not something that, pension plan design is not something that any of our employees are dealing with on a day-to-day basis, and yet it will affect them in a very direct and personal way. And so it's important for them, if they're being asked to cast a vote on a change...
There's gonna be lots of dialogue between...
There will be lots of dialogue, there will be written, written documentation that they can take and share with their financial advisors if they wish to, to get some guidance from professionals. And of course, you know, part of the role that I play here is, is the balance between the council and the staff, is, is try and look out for the staff interest and also look out for the council's interest. In bringing this forward, I think I'm looking out for council's interest. In the process going forward, I'll try and make sure that, as I mentioned, that no employee becomes a loser out of this. Certainly, there will be employees who won't be as well off as they might project they might be under our current plan, but there are a lot of mites, a lot of possibilities, variables in this. And so what I think the, what I think this does, if we go forward with it, is it removes some of the variability and gives more certainty.
You said there were 17,000 public sector workers in Nova Scotia?
There, uh, no. There are many more than that. There are 17,000, yeah, there's 17,000 members in this program currently contributing. This plan does not include the teachers.
Yeah.
The teachers have their own separate pension plan.
So this would be, this would include a lot of like municipalities in too, right?
Cape Breton Regional Municipality is in, and our consultants worked with them on that transfer. KD University is in, and I have a list of a half a dozen others that have transferred in since this, this opportunity became available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay, so councillor McLeod and then councillor Wood.
I sit on the committee with the town staff and, and workers, and it's a mind-bending exercise. We sat there on two meetings over the past year, the most recent one this week, I think, or this week, and there's a lot to it. I want to thank and compliment Jeff on his explanation tonight, and, and it's hopefully a worthwhile project for the town. I look forward to working with the committee still. Thanks, Jeff.
Councillor Wood?
How, how far down the 700-odd thousand dollar transition cost road do we have to go before we get to a vote and know whether or not we're gonna be able to do this?
So the cost of doing the work is not included in the 700,000. The 700,000 is the estimated cost of the transfer.
It's my next cost, so if they're separate, how much?
So you're talking about $50,000 roughly to do all the work. Now, they gave us a range, and we haven't got that detail yet. If you tell us, go ahead, we'll go back to our actuaries and say, okay, tell us what is the process and what are the costs, and where are the milestones, the, the pauses that we'll stop and say, okay, is this looks like it's heading in the direction we thought, or it's, or it's not? And we can report back to council on, on a regular basis on that. The cost of doing the work would come directly out of the pension assets, not as a separate expense of the town.
So, the teachers of, out of it, because I was concerned about the $1.6 billion debt there, that doesn't affect this thing. Some years back, not that long ago, the province had to top up one of the public sector union pensions. Do you know if it was one that's in this, in this group?
So I would guess that it is probably related to this plan. So back in, I think it was 2010, Graham Steele did some work to, on this particular plan. They may have transferred in some cash at that time because it changed from being the sponsor, sponsor carrying all the risks, to it being a shared risk. So I'm pretty sure that in the negotiation to share the risk, there was probably, well, deal with some of the liability that, that remains that's unfunded, so I'm only guessing.
Is any of that, there was some kind of suggestion, some of that unfunded liability still exists there?
So...
Is that between the province and the union, or?
No, so what's, the situation with the plan right now is that it is funded, I think, 105%. So on a going concern basis, it has a surplus, and that's why they're offering indexing is because they have more assets than they, than they need. They're not required to even do a wind-up or a solvency test because there's no anticipation that it's gonna wind up or, or be forced to pay that, that amount. So it's not even calculated. And our pension consultants tell us that if our pension were to remain separate and on our own, that that test is also likely to disappear for us, the solvency test, but the wind-up cost is more real for us than it is for them.
So I'll just finish up by saying, my concern is that if the province likely is the heft of membership, the province, and, and some future government decides to settle a contract and not pay the, you know, some pension obligations like they've done in the past, because the union doesn't want to put any money into their pension, and the province says, well, if you're not putting in, we're not putting in, oh, let's get this thing settled so we can have an election, what's the risk that we're gonna get caught in that world with?
So the, the shared risk with that plan, and part of the reason for the savings that the town would realize is that the contributions into the plan are 50% plan sponsor and 50% the employees, and it is, it is shared risk. And so those are the rules, it doesn't matter if it's for the town, or for Acadia, or for Cape Breton, or for any...
Or the province.
Or the province. Those are the rules. It's the same benefits, same cost.
So if the province doesn't make its contributions, it's sort of like me as an employer, if I don't make my, tell me that it's that, like I have to make my, my deductions and send them in every month? Province have to do that to the plan?
I'm pretty sure they do.
You're pretty sure?
It is, I'm pretty sure. I can confirm that for you. But it is, the pension is run by Public Service Superannuation Plan Corporation. It's a separate corporate body, it has a board of trustees and its own staff that manage the pension funds.
So do they run the teacher's pension plan, which is 1.6 billion in debt?
No.
They don't?
No, this, this is just this plan.
One other quick question. So whatever happens, we come to Jim McLeod's perfect world, and we have amalgamation, and we have a different plan out there, and, out there in the municipality of Yarmouth and down there in the municipality of Argyle, and here in the Town of Yarmouth, what?
He's got that answer.
Got that answer?
Yep, so...
This is Jim McLeod's question.
So I think I answered this question earlier today, actually, so that's why I'm ready. Under, under provincial legislation and amalgamation, what an amalgamation does is, is it creates a new municipality. So you create new municipality X, and you dissolve the two municipalities that are going into it. That municipality would have its own...
That's if there's two going in, right? What if there's three going in?
Same thing.
Okay.
All existing municipalities that are going in are dissolved, a new one is created, and so that new entity would, would hire its own staff, would have its own pay scales and benefits. Now, it would have the opportunity to have the PSSP pension plan, it would have the opportunity to have its own, or have a defined contribution, whatever it wanted to do. For those that are subscribed to either the Town of Yarmouth plan, or if it becomes the PSSP, at the, at the time that you cease to continue to be a member of that plan, your pension then is deferred. So you're no longer making contributions, you're not a member of the plan. When you are eligible to draw your pension, so in the PSSP scenario, they do have an early retirement option at 60, so when you turn 60, you could, you start to draw your deferred pension, or you could wait till you're 65 or any time in between.
Okay, good, thanks.
Yeah, you're, sorry, just last comment is that your accrued benefits are protected.
Yeah.
So at the end of the year, whatever you've earned and is, is owed to you in pension is protected, and whether you take it deferred or you take it as an employee when the time comes, it, it doesn't go backwards.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, so what is council's, what?
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, so what exactly was the motion?
Accept the recommendation of councillor to discuss the feasibility of...
Right, good. Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
And you will come back at the price before we do anything, right?
Come back to what?
He asked a question earlier, councillor Wood, is you're gonna go back to the people and you'll come back again?
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Yeah, okay, good.
What a crew. Okay, reports, council advisory committees, deputy mayor, you're on.
Thank you, your worship, I make a motion that staff be directed to review yard sale signage and removal and report back.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that the amount of tax grants over, over allocation be equally shared by all applicants to bring the amount within budget. Maybe the CAO, if I have a second there, can just say a word about that, please?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Your worship, we, we've been trying to be a little too diligent in our, in our grants on taxes, and so we have, we have done our allocations prior to the setting of the tax rate. So it's always been a bit of, a little bit of estimation within that process, and this year, it, it came back to haunt us a little bit, that we had over allocated the, beyond the amount of budget that was available. And so in order to bring things back in line with budget, what was proposed by staff and, and is recommended here by council is that proportionally, the grants to the organizations will be, as I say, proportionally reduced, so that our, our amount stays on budget.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that the FCI action plan be accepted as presented and submitted to the Department of Municipal Affairs.
Oh yeah, we didn't vote on that last one, thank you.
Oh.
Okay, so on number two, the, the tax grants, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. The FCI action plan, all those in favor?
Need a second, second question, your worship?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Worship.
Yep, you can.
Your worship, just as a follow-up to that, I, I, just yesterday, found a 1994 master's thesis from an engineer attending Carleton University at the time, getting his masters in engineering. And his thesis was on the, the maintaining and reinvesting in, in municipal infrastructure. And one of the cornerstones of his thesis, in terms of a recommendation, was that municipalities ought to fund their depreciation. And that was 24 years ago.
24 years ago.
He also suggested a gas tax, and there was a councillor in the Ottawa area who was, who was pounding that one at the time, and he also suggested that the value of depreciation be calculated on the, on the financial statements of municipalities, which all that has come to pass, except most municipalities are not funding their depreciation, but...
Most?
Most, most. Not funding their depreciation. Town of Yarmouth has been doing it for 13 or 14 years now.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that the Food Bank Society be requested to provide a site plan of their proposal, proposed addition.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Your worship, I make a motion that correspondence from John Nickerson regarding the lobster license plates be received and placed on file.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question, your worship?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion, as the municipality of Yarmouth has agreed to pay 50% of the rental fee for the Remembrance Day service at Mariners Centre, the Town of Yarmouth will pay the other 50%.
Second.
Seconded by everybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I make the motion that the Town of Yarmouth consolidated financial statements as of March 31st, 2018 be accepted as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that correspondence from the municipality of Shelburne regarding a rural healthcare group be received and placed on file.
Second.
Question, your worship? We'll talk about that later.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that Grant Thornton be appointed as the auditors for the Town of Yarmouth for the fiscal year of 2018, 2019.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Thank you, your worship.
Motion carried. Thank you, deputy. Citizen Advisory Committee's Planning Advisory, councillor, councillor McLeod?
From the public hearing of October the 11th, that's earlier, tonight, I move to approve the development agreement to permit construction of up to 55 apartment dwellings in the former high school at 52 Parade Street, as outlined in our planners' report.
Second, worship.
Moved and seconded, so any discussion? Because Steve spoke, and he, and Martha, any concerns?
Was that, Jeff, was that televised earlier with the public hearing, or no? Are we only starting at 7:30?
Your worship, uh, I will ask the, the fire chief who, who runs controls over there, we did record that, did we stream it?
Yeah.
Did we stream it as well?
We streamed it, but it wasn't on East Link.
Okay.
It only comes on 7:30.
Okay, and that's the order, you recorded first, first session.
Yeah.
Did we stream that as well?
No.
Okay, so it is on our Ustream, um, we can make sure it's on our Ustream site for people to view.
There's a useful discussion there.
Yep, there was. Good, so it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question, your worship.
Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
So, um, from our Planning Advisory Committee meeting of October 2nd, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the municipal planning strategy and the land use spy law to create a new zone entitled Mixed Residential Development Park Zone in the land use spy law to replace the Mobile Home Park Zone, and apply it to the current Mobile Home Park on Argyle Street and some adjacent properties to permit residential development, including apartments and townhouse dwellings with up to eight dwelling units, as outlined in our planners' report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question, worship.
Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
And the second item, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use spy law to allow for more than two accessory buildings on a residential zoned lot used for group dwellings, as outlined in our planners' report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one?
Question, worship.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Find out where I am here. Communities in Bloom Advisory Council, councillor Cleveland, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I actually have a couple of things I want to do. First is a, a recommendation that we have that we can discuss, and the second thing would be a presentation that I want to make. Starting off with the recommendation, which comes from the meeting, actually, I was not there, uh, on October 3rd, but it's something that we've been discussing for a little while, and that is that the Communities in Bloom Committee recommends to council to consider installing a water source for the u- for use at the Doug Malonsen Park for maintenance of the plants and trees. Now, I'll ex- I'd like to make a little, thank you, I'd like to explain a little bit about that. Now, with, with the Doug Malonsen Park, the green space, it's, it's, it's a beautiful spot, um, but as you know, it's been particularly dry this year, and it looks like it's becoming a fairly regular thing. And, uh, we've been running on, the, the wonderful volunteers that are there have been running on the, uh, the generosity of neighbors. Some of the residents next to the park have been allowing use of their water, um, and just supplying them with a, with a hose and, and running it, but they've been running a lot of water, especially this year, to keep everything green. And so, it would be very helpful if we could have some kind of a water source there.
Was it, you sent that to...
Yeah, what's, I don't, go ahead. Oh, sorry, who just had their line on? Was that you, councillor McLeod, first?
Let Jeff go, I was just...
A couple, a couple of thoughts on this is, is first, first off, um, you know, the property does belong to the town. This group, Doug Malonsen Park Committee, is developing the park there, and there seems like things are coming along nicely. Um, you know, park staff could, if for maintenance purposes, a, a water tap was, was desirable and necessary, they could install that. It wouldn't necessarily require a, a council motion. Um, you know, if it was going to be a hugely expensive thing, I'm making assumptions about where the water lines might be. But there is, there's the other issue that, and that is ultimately, I guess, the purpose of the, of the, of the water, if it's, if it's for watering grass, um, I don't think there's another park in town that we actually water the grass, that we let, we let nature take its, take its course on that. I know they plan to put deck, uh, flowers and other kinds of plantings in there that may, may need water more than, than, um, the, the grass itself would. So, if it were more for that than, say, the grass, then, then, you know, and it isn't terribly expensive, it's something the staff could do.
Okay.
But...
They go around with those water tanks anyway, don't they? Like, I, I know by the herb and stuff, they have a truck full up, and they...
Yes, so for, for plantings, when we do flower plantings in the median on Vancouver Street, for our, uh, plants that we hang on Main Street, uh, for down below here at the Loss of Sea Monument, and, and probably as well in Frost Park, uh, for some of the, some of the plantings watering Woodaker. But my, what I was trying to make a distinction from is that, is that I don't believe that we water gra- grass itself anywhere.
It's not, it's not really for watering the grass, it's more for the trees that are going to be there, that are there, and, uh, and plantings. It's not really for grass, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, I was gonna, you hate this word, echo councillor Cleveland, I know you don't...
Well, you're allowed to use it now.
Okay. Uh, councillor Cleveland's 100% right. I think it's more because this park is being developed, uh, trees are put in there, I think they're like $370 a shot, so I think they're more concerned about the development and the, and the growth of the, of the trees, because that's going to be the next little part, what you're going to do, is, is, is what we've done, uh, on a national level. So, I think that's what they're more concerned about, not watering the grass, but, uh, making sure that everything is, is, uh, well-watered for, for the continued growth of the, of the varied species of trees that they're going to put in there.
Okay, councillor Hood?
Got a water tap on the Brown Street parking lot, the Armory Club does an outstanding job, uh, for us, really, um, on our parking lot. But, on the grass thing, the first year you plant, you know, the first summer you plant the stuff, you've got to put water to it. You can't, you cannot try to grow grass on dry ground, you've got to put water to it. So, I would expect there would be some use for water, especially, like you say, the first...
Yeah.
But the waterfall, there's a, there's a, Brown Street has a, it got damaged once by a snowplow, but it's there.
Just waiting my turn.
Oh, okay, you're on.
I want to echo Jeff's comments.
Crossing the lock, man.
There's a, uh, there's a fire hydrant, there's a fire hydrant, uh, directly across the street, in front of the, what I call the Killam Doris, Doris Powell's property now. And, uh, but, and with respect to the Doug Malonsen Committee, um, I, I don't think what they're asking is, is, is out of reach, but, uh, you know, building a park and with support from the town, you know, I, I don't want to go overboard. I'm a major contributor up there, and, uh, I want very much to see it do our best up there. But like Jeff says, we mow the lawn and, and, and we water plants throughout the town, whether they're hanging poles, or in the Loss of the Sea Memorial, or other locations, and the staff do a very good job. But, you know, we, it all costs money, and I think that we should keep in mind that we should all be contributing to, um, you know, to, to the support of those kinds of operations within our town boundaries, so.
Go, wait a second, Ed.
I'm, I'm all set with that. I, I, you know, nothing comes easy, and I think that we should continue on working our way at it. So, I'm going to support, uh, the recommendation or the motion, but, uh, I also think that we all need to make, continue to make contributions.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, if I, committee, I was chairing that day, councillor Cleveland, uh, couldn't make it that day, but I was chairing, I think it was more, uh, the, it was more of a process, uh, putting the motion forward, just to get it out of committee and make sure that...
Get it done, get it looked at, okay. All right, and, and it was clear it's not for lawns, so, all right.
Question, worship.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Okay, next thing, and that is, I was in Alberta, had the honor of being in Alberta as part of the Yarmouth Communities in Bloom contingent. We were there because the National Symposium was there, and, uh, we were there because we are hosting the National Symposium next year, and so it was required of us to host a community showcase there, encourage people to go, uh, to come to Yarmouth, and I think we were, I think we were pretty successful in that, I have to say. We, everyone knew who we were by the time we were gone.
No wonder with those open...
We were hard to miss. So, we were very successful there, but on top of that, we were extremely successful in that, uh, we were awarded, uh, both five Bloom Silver by the judges who attended. Uh, every year, usually every year, we have judges who show up in July, July or August, and look the town over, they're toured, uh, they have a walking tour, they have a driving tour, um, and, uh, they judge us on conditions of things that are here, uh, by their criteria. We scored 887 points out of 1,000, uh, which is, yeah, it's the, it's the most we've ever gotten, and actually, uh, three more points and we had, we would have been gold. Uh, we got five Bloom Silver, which is the highest we've ever placed, and on top of that, we received, um, a national award for our tree inventory. This is something that we've been maintaining for a while, uh, and what it is, is an inventory of the trees that, uh, takes, keeps track of every tree in the town, what their value is, if there's new trees planted, then they are added to it, if there are trees that are cut down, they're taken away, it's a living document. So, we have an inventory of every tree within the boundaries of the town of Yarmouth. And, uh, one of the judges, Tina Liu, works for Ottawa, and was extremely impressed, wanted to take it, take the same idea and do it in Ottawa, but it hadn't been done in Ottawa up to this point, and she said that it was the best tree inventory she'd ever seen. And, uh, we won a national award for tree inventory. And so, I have to present to you, mayor, so you can take a look at it. It's the Nova Scotia Circle of Excellence with the, uh, five Bloom Silver and recognition, and the national recognition for urban forestry in, uh, in the tree inventory. So, uh, we have that, and...
Yeah, it's pretty terrific stuff.
It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Very.
So, we're very proud of that, but also we're very excited about, uh, next year. We believe that, uh, we can make a showing as good as anyone ever has. We're the smallest town ever to host this National Symposium, and, uh, trust me, there's going to be some big things here, so, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cleveland, and, you know, on behalf of, of all of us, at the town, staff and, and councils as well, thanks for representing us the way you did, even if you wore those lime green outfits. I think it did the trick, though.
It works, yeah, it works, I, I can't...
Take credit, because we have an amazing committee, we really do, and as far as the awards go, it's, it's not our award, it's the town's award. It's the town, it's the people in the town who take care of their places, and have so much pride, and it's the staff, the town staff here, you cannot thank them enough. Todd and his crew are amazing, and I can't say enough about them, they're, they're fantastic.
And they work the trees again with the inventory.
Yes, and it, he, it's his award, it really is.
You know, we get, um, it's funny, and I don't know how it happens, but there, I often wander in and out of town hall, obviously, but there's usually, in the summer especially, some folks from away at, at the outside, you know, the wayfinding signage, and they're reading where are they going to go, and the number one comment is, is just that, how do you get your town to look like this? Like, the, the gardens and the greenery, and, and I hear it over and over and over again. And, and a lot of people from, from the states will comment on the hydrangeas because a lot of them can't grow them at all, and they're just, just blooming, and, yeah, Todd, Todd and his entire team is, uh, they are nothing short of amazing.
Todd said he's going to find those other three or 13 points for next year. He was, he's very upset about those. Yeah.
We'll get them. So, thank you, councillor. Okay, reports for information. Questions for committee chairs, anyone? Oh, I have a question for councillor Cleveland, I guess I should have asked earlier. So, so for next year, I assume, um, maybe I shouldn't assume, Communities in Bloom will help the entire community know what we should be doing.
Yes, um, planning is underway, obviously. It has been underway on a, on a smaller scale, just an organizational scale, for a while now, but now that we're back and, uh, we're ready to go, it's time to really start, uh, going with it, and, uh, yeah, the town, I'm going to make sure that the town is aware through every media that we have, that, of everything that's going on, and, uh, we'll get everyone who wants to be involved and engage as many people as we possibly can.
So, it's a national symposium?
Yes, it is.
But the world is invited.
Yes, it is, it's, uh, and that's, that's very fair, and thanks for mentioning that, actually. Uh, in Alberta, we had people from Ireland, we had representatives from Ireland, we had representatives from, oh my goodness, all over the place, uh, Holland, uh, the UK, um, Wales was there, uh, Germany was there, many of them, uh, Italy, Italy was fantastic, many of whom cannot wait to come to Yarmouth, because we, we preach the gospel, let me tell you, uh, much like, much like, uh, a born-again preacher, I think, we were really, we were aggressive. And, uh, actually, I, I have to tell you this story, I'm really sorry, I, I, just to stretch it out a little bit, but in the final, the final dinner was on Saturday night, we had had all, everything was done, and there's this final dinner, and we're all sitting at the table, and this gentleman comes up to me, uh, and he's the mayor of a town in Holland, cannot speak English, uh, he has an interpreter with him, um, and, uh, no, actually, I'm wrong, he's, he wasn't from Holland, I, my goodness, where was he from? He was from, he was from Chechnya or somewhere.
Wow.
It's terrible to say, I don't remember where he was from. At any rate, I have his book, because he came to me, he was so impressed by all of our presentations, and the gentleman, he's, he's the mayor of this town, didn't even speak English, had an interpreter with him, uh, stood at our table, presented us with a book of his, uh, his town and his county, it's a beautiful picture book that I have at home right now, should have brought it with me, and, uh, he invited us to go and told us that he was going to make every effort to come to Yarmouth in, uh, next year, and, you know, he gave me a hug, and, and they, they were so impressed, it was, it was amazing, it really was, it was, it was quite a moment, and, uh, it's, it's great to kind of be there and, and, and see that, and to make that kind of an impression is kind of nice, but it was, it was pretty amazing.
Stop. I missed out.
That was a video. Oh, yeah.
Fantastic. She's a star, too. Nobody, everybody can, nobody can wait, they have to go see the, this happy mayor who sits in the big chair.
Let me get, I'll get in the big chair here in a second.
Oh, my gosh, thank you, yeah, we, we did a, we did a pretty fun video, though, we covered the entire county, and it, it was good, it was, it was a lot of fun.
So that people can see it on Facebook, because I've never released it.
Oh, my goodness.
And, uh, so, so everybody can make fun of us together.
Yep, let them, let them have at it. Thick skin here. Okay, any more questions for committee chairs? We're on to additions. So, addition A, healthcare. Um, so I'm just going to... So I'm just going to step out, just so everyone understands process. I can't make motions from my seat here, chairing, so the deputy and I are going to switch seats, because this one's too important to just, to just leave. Thank you, deputy.
Yeah, I get it low, I know. I know, I get it low. Your worship?
Thank you, deputy. So we know there's, I want to say, a lot of angst, a lot of activity and concern around healthcare and that entire piece, and I just want to say that the town and council, we're aware of all the issues. We choose to continue to do the work that we've been doing with regard to doctor recruitment and to continue to work with, in partnerships, to forward that. So I have a motion here. Whereas, Yarmouth Regional Hospital, along with the team of family doctors practicing in our area, and the numerous health and wellness services available in our community, allows Yarmouth to position itself as the regional center for healthcare in southwestern Nova Scotia. And whereas, through strategic partnerships with our community, Nova Scotia Health Authority and Dalhousie University have seen tremendous success with the local family medicine residency program, with 10 of the 15 graduates staying in Nova Scotia to date, six of whom are now family doctors in southwestern Nova Scotia, and several others providing local services to our area, laying the foundation for more recruitment success and a refocusing of our Municipal Health Human Resources Committee. And whereas, local recruitment efforts are helped by having an equipped, modern hospital that can boast of a recent expansion of urology program, an expansion and enhancement of surgical suites, efforts to enhance services at our cancer center, new equipment such as CAT scanners, ultrasound machines, automated lab, and other essential infrastructure, thanks to community support through our Yarmouth Regional Hospital Foundation. And whereas, the town of Yarmouth wishes to demonstrate to physicians and other healthcare professionals that they can work in a community where their contributions are valued and where municipal and community leaders are prepared to work in a positive, progressive way in partnership with the local hospital and health authority on solution-focused approaches to health challenges. Whereas, the town of Yarmouth has previously invested between $100,000 and $150,000 annually in doctor recruitment efforts in cooperation with our municipal partners, and believes in the impact this funding has on doctor recruitment. I therefore make a motion that council engage with our municipal neighbors on a coordinated doctor recruitment plan and report back in time for a budget allocation for the next fiscal year. And if someone seconds that, I'll just...
Have a second here. Counselor Hood?
Okay, so I'll just say this, that I can pull that together tomorrow, it's just that we've had the doctor recruitment committee up and running for a number of years when you were mayor, deputy, and in my tenure as mayor as well, and it just stopped a couple of years ago when they made some changes. And the province has now kind of turned around again, and they've made some more changes whereby it's going to be much easier for us to do the things that we've done in the past, which was tremendously successful, and I know Shirley Watson Poole gave me the numbers, but in my first, I think, three years as mayor, we recruited 33 doctors in the way that we were doing that. Now, a lot of them are specialists, so, you know, folks weren't seeing as many family doctors come up through the ranks, but that's all, that's all changing. We just need to pull that committee together, and if this motion goes through, I will reach out to the partners, to our municipal partners tomorrow and start that process.
And I know you've been very busy lately, your worship, over the last couple of months, like you stated, but can you give us a little overview on some of the recruiting tools and some of the recruiters that you have talked to in the last couple of months?
Yeah, so, yeah, I've been really busy trying to, trying to push this, because it's really tremendously important to everyone, and not just in the town, but this entire region, for doctors. So, you know, the town's doing everything we can. So two weeks ago, it was pretty cool, I spent the afternoon with the Dalhousie Family Residency Program, and I'll say this, that I can't say in words how important that is to this community. If you want to recruit doctors, the residency program is bar none the best way to do it. And I understand the numbers, that, I got goosebumps on my goosebumps, we're retaining 66% of those doctors. That is unheard of. I think the average somewhere is around 20%. We're keeping 66% of these doctors, and they go through the residency program at the hospital through Dalhousie, and it's just amazing. So I met with them a couple of weeks ago, they just asked if I'd come in and do a wellness session for them, because everybody needs that, and I did that. But on top of it, it was a great opportunity for us to get to know each other, and I had some really great one-on-one conversations with them. Last week, Dr. Rod Wilson, he's with the Physician Services Branch in the Nova Scotia Department of Health and Wellness, and he reached out to me, because they have some new incentives, and I can't, I didn't actually bring them with me, but I'll certainly send them out to council, but there are a number of incentives. He just wanted to make sure that the residency doctors had access to that, that they understood, you know, what was available to them, because things are changing, and it's really all good. So, yeah, so that evening, we met as well with the residency doctors to go over the incentives, ensure they understood them, and of course, always the great discussions around, you know, how really, truly valued they are to our entire community, and that they can reach out at any time with concerns. And sometimes I think, you know, they're young, but they're professionals, they're actually doctors, and it's, it might be daunting, you know, in a new community, who do we reach out to? So I just made sure that they knew, you know, the mayor's office, for one, is wide open, and if I can say something about Dr. Wilson and the incentive piece, he kept saying to them, you know, we're flexible. And I can't tell you how good it was to hear that, that if the doctors are thinking something, if they have questions, if they have ideas about recruitment, what will keep them here? Then the province is wide open to listen to those. It was just, it was great. So we're doing this on a continuous basis, I don't want anyone to think that we ever dropped the ball on this. We're always continually trying to move this forward, it's just a matter of ironing out some of the details, and off we go.
Thank you, your worship, Counselor Hood.
I seconded the motion, because I'm very enthusiastic about the project, and I was very disappointed when the project threw one, I've got to be careful what I say, when the province changed the ground rules on that, and to tell you, so was very involved in previous council service in getting that up and running, and I personally recruited two, the first two doctors when we had the $100,000 incentive program, one of whom's a doctor here in this community right now, a surgeon, and the other one's gone on somewhere else, but fully repaid his obligations to the town and the program we had at the time. But that combined with what we did with the two medical, the two clinics, the one, Dr. Lay's clinic, and then the purchase of the liquor store, were all pet projects that we worked on and were able to achieve, and I fully support this motion, so I think.
Questions? Somebody's...
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Thank you, your worship.
Deputy? Addition B, the Hundred Meals Update. I didn't write anything out, but I just wanted to let everyone know, I had a mayor's task force met, oh my dear, what are we, was it yesterday? It seems like about a week ago. But, yeah, so the mayor's task force met yesterday, we just wanted to pull together some of the loose ends for the Hundred Meals. Amazingly successful last year, and like I explained to the team, it was, it was above and beyond the expectations, because we expected that when I was getting calls about people could either pay for their medication or their power, or they could eat. And I got three calls in one week, which is what prompted the Hundred Meals in the first place. And so I thought, you know, if folks could even save $5 a day, you could put it towards one of your bills. But what happened is it covered that, but it, I think the one that hit me most was the seniors that were in their homes, because it's cold and it's winter and it's icy, and they had friends picking them up and bringing them to the dinners, and they were making plans, you know, for the following days, you know, to go together for tea or, you know, join their friends. And so folks that are marginalized, especially in the winter, were finding their way to these meals, and folks were reaching out to give them rides and making sure that they knew when the dates were and things like that. People I didn't even know before stepped up to volunteer. It was just, I remember the young man that was literally homeless, and he said so after his third bowl of chili, he said, "I just, I have no place to go, I have no place..." And somebody at the table behind him tapped him on the shoulder, and he said, "You do now." And of course, the mayor went in the kitchen and cried, because that's what I do. But anyway, it was, it was wonderful community spirit and initiative. So we're going to do it again this year, and it will start December the 3rd, and I think it goes to mid-March, so it's the 100 days. I think last year it was just crazy logistically, because we were trying to figure out everything. So this year, it's relatively easy, because we had folks step up for every single day. So for example, Hope Center took Mondays and Fridays, they're discussing their busing options to pick people up if they, if it's seniors or folks that, you know, have, maybe have a disability that can't get around. So we'll get that information out there. I think the biggest piece will be, and I see Gary's here this evening from CGLS, but to make sure that everybody knows to go either to the Hundred Meals Facebook page or to the radio for updates and information, because it was a little bit crazy last year with all the phone calls. If it's snowing, we'll just call the radio, and I'm sure they can, and we'll put it on our site. So the only difficult piece was Sundays, and it was difficult last year. So I just want to ask council, if you're up for one Sunday a month again? Okay, good. So that's, that's easy. Other than that, it's good. So I'll get the information, all of the information out as I pull things together. So thanks for that. And then addition C was a change for the committee the whole time. So we are going from Wednesday afternoons to the same Wednesday, but from 10 till 12 in the morning.
I'll make a motion, your worship, we change the date of the meeting the whole, the fourth Wednesday of the month, starting at 10 o'clock, and not to exceed 12 o'clock.
Right on.
No.
The answer's all second.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to put your light off. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carry. Nobody's fault. They don't mind. It's only our third time change. It's all good. Okay, approval of invoices, please?
Double.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carry. The date of next meeting is November the 15th, but it won't be televised, right? Because that's the following week, because we're at the NSFM conference. Speaking of which... Never mind. Okay, and a motion to go in camera?
Double, your worship.
Thank you.